Good afternoon all, I'd like to welcome you and call this meeting in order please. Can we have a full call Mrs. Byron?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Age.
Here.
Mrs. Spencer.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of the board.
Thank you, may we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, a considered republic which stands on the nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Having no adjustments, entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, this is Dr. Martin.
Thank you Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm excited about this evening through the transition process and over the last 100-plus days, strategic planning has been something that's been on my mind and something we know that we're going to have to do and it's coming at a critical time with me being new to Orange, with all the school divisions coming out of COVID and the new realities that we face there, with the fact that we are also in the process of rolling out a new website on which the strategic plan and the process we're going to use will be publicized and also with the rightful sentiment of needing to make sure that we have meaningful engagement with the community and our parents, so this is really a perfect time to delve into this work and to really make the strategic plan a document that doesn't sit on the shelf and does guide decisions, everything from facilities and maintenance to position control, to instruction and all the other decisions that are made, having a quality strategic plan is really important. And we're really excited to have Dr. Kevin Kastner here this evening, who has been a very fine educator for a long time, comes highly regarded. I first met Kevin, he probably doesn't remember it, but I met him and his group when they were conducting the Stafford County Public Schools Superintendent Search and I was one of the, you know, we were one of the focus groups and I was a member of one of the groups that was working with Dr. Kastner and talking about what they would like to see in the next superintendent. And his 14-step plan for engaging and building consensus and trust and transparency with stakeholders is something that I value a lot and so it is my pleasure this evening to introduce Dr. Kevin Kastner, who is here to give a broad overview of Cambridge Services and how they conduct strategic planning. And I've also sent you guys just a little bit ago, a very detailed kind of proposal overview, if you can read it at your convenience too, that includes things like letters of reference from other school divisions, both in and out of the Commonwealth of Virginia, letters of reference from other school division superintendents, as well as some background as to into and a curriculum invited, so to speak, for Kevin and his associate, Dr. Wayne Harris. So without further ado, Dr. Kastner, it's a pleasure to have you here, thank you for being here.
It's my pleasure. It's my pleasure to be here. I've been in front of a few boards through the years and here I almost feel home. I'm from Charlottesville, Virginia. See my drive over here, beautiful drive. I've lived in Almarve County since 1995, when I first became superintendent in Almarve County Public Schools, superintendent for around 12 years. Since retiring as superintendent in Almarve, I've been involved in two things. One, I got involved with a company called BWP, which is a large superintendent search group of Midwest and have been done, have done 50 to 60 superintendent searches, many, many through the Commonwealth, Stafford being one, but also done Williamsburg, King City, I've done Arlington, I've done Alexandria, Falls Church, Winchester, just a whole bunch of them. And I also have been doing some national searches, I've done Chicago, which is the biggest one I've ever done, Wisconsin, Madison, Wisconsin, Columbus, down in Atlanta. So I have an opportunity to work across the country with school boards in the process of the superintendent search and also doing strategic plans. And I'm now president of Cambridge. I bought the company about 10 years ago. Again, when I do strategic plan, it usually follows using new superintendents as you're going in and looking at a community and trying to develop partnership with the school board and superintendent in your community during the transition. If you look at the proposal and the fact that the proposal is publicly record, you can see the places that we've worked and also you'll see a little bit more about my background, resume, but also my colleague that will be working with you is Dr. Wayne Harris. Now Wayne Harris also is a former superintendent, who was superintendent in Roanoke for 11 years. Wayne also was an area superintendent for many years in Fairfax County. And Wayne and I have been partners together in working with school districts, again predominantly here in Virginia. So the part of starting today is we wanted this process to be able to earn your trust and the trust of this community in a process that is a good practice for school systems. We're not the only group that does strategic planning. And there are times strategic plan doesn't always have a good reputation. That's not going to happen here. I've done this enough through the years that we have been able to become partners with superintendent, the school board and the community. And the work that we will do, which will be customized to make it unique to your community, is going to follow the process that I'm going to outline in a brief way today. What's going to happen is this is going to keep repeating itself over the next several months and in the next school year and the school year after that and the school year after that. At your table, you have a copy of the PowerPoint that you can refer to later. You also have the details that's in the proposal regarding the 14-step process. You also have an article that was recently published by the National School Board Association in which they invited us to submit the article because of the timing on it, which relates to this, "Using Stakeholder-Driven Strategic Planning to Build Community Consensus and Trust." Because school boards and superintendents aren't isolated from your community, they're an integral part of it. But it starts with the partnership of the school board and superintendent. When you hire Cambridge and you know our process, one of the key elements is the fact that the superintendent and the school board are going to trust us to engage with members of your community, 25 to 30 people, to develop a strategic plan and trust this group that's going to be representative of your community to develop a draft document that in several months they will share with you. It will not be a top-down plan. It will be a plan that will involve stakeholders in your community and the participation of these people are going to ensure a greater understanding and a greater partnership with people, not just within your school district, with people throughout your entire community as you begin to engage the process that will change your culture. You already have a good system, I know. But every school system wants to continue to grow and get better. And when you can find a reason to do that and understand the whys of why you do it, then the structures that we're going to be working through are going to enable you to have this to be integral to your entire work, day in, day out, year in and year out. So it really starts with the fact, the strategic planning and excellence is not an accident. It's the result of good intentions and your stewardship as school board members. Your intention are to do what's best for your children here in your county. That's a common ground that we have with every member of your community. And the fact when you get into this, it gets into execution, it gets into the details, but it needs to first be driven by the why. So why do you do strategic planning? In the Cambridge process, we believe that engagement and engaging your community in meaningful ways and trying to build partnership and public confidence by transparency. All the work that we're going to be doing is going to end up being on your website. It's going to be available for anyone to see, comment and perhaps give input if there's certain areas that they either have issue with or they want to continue to support. We also want to create a vision, but just not internal within the system, but it's within the schools and it's within your extended community, it's within your parents, your partnerships and end to the point of having you working together for your children. We need to determine which initiatives are working and which aren't working, which is something that's important to address because school systems are changing. Sometimes school systems don't change, but the world around them changes and we'll talk about that context tonight. Sometimes you might have to abandon something. That's not always easy and we're not very good at it. But if we're going to do it, let's do it with all the stakeholders involved, not just central office and the cap. We need to talk about spending money and how if you have to prioritize, are there ways that you need to look at your budget to make sure that your funds are aligned with your initiatives? And the times to redirect money. And we can talk about that as we go through this process. Again, it's also about courage. It's about courage to confront if there's an elephant in the room, the courage to look at things that aren't quite as effective and finding a way to find another way to move forward. We're in a world that's changing, technology, literacy, and how we do school? Here's a question. As we're evolving and we come out of COVID, are we now going to go back to what we did all before we got into COVID, had kids not in school? Or are we going to see what we can learn from that and now all of a sudden look at how we do school? The world's changing. I have a daughter that graduated from UVA two years ago. She got a job with Oracle in Austin, Texas. So she moves to Austin, she gets an apartment she pays way too much money for because she wanted to walk to work because there's a big office not more than a half mile from where she lived. Two years later, she doesn't live in Austin anymore, she lives in Northern Virginia. She never set foot in that office. She does all her work online, now unfortunately to her, she's working with India and has to get up at 5:00 in the morning. All the children that we have graduating are now looking at a world that some of the preparation that they had is no longer the same because things don't work the same way. And all of a sudden, each of your students, even as you do school, when they leave your system to be successful, all that is going to have the transition. And what we see is we need to continue to change, we need to know the impact of our shifting demographics and systems as there are not too many systems that are becoming less diverse. They're becoming more diverse. And all of a sudden, you're at a point with new leadership, a new superintendent, you want to build upon whatever was done in the past, but again, you as a board hired someone with the leadership qualities that you were looking for and you did this based upon looking at how you want to find who's going to be the base for your system to move it forward. And you want to do this by creating a shared vision. So the context, a lot of the plans that I did two years ago, I wasn't allowed to then go finish something because I couldn't get it in front of a group. When I came back, a lot of the work that we did, we had to change. Because we never had time in a purposeful way to develop consensus in community and we had to figure out what we learned. And there were certain things we learned, a lot of it had to do with support system for our children. It had to learn about some of the great things with technology and some red flags with technology. It had to work with the fact that a kid's attention span wasn't the same. My son, when he was online, I had to take his phone away from him and tell him to pay attention. And I know that he went back to school, he had transition, he was glad to be back, but I think he had also been back to the routines, this is happening with each of our students. Also we're dealing with issues on some kids that actually didn't keep up and we had gaps. So the timing for this, I'm going to need to make some water please, is to the point that when we're blurring the lines and we're talking about how we do school, we then have to look at and, you know, you have children, grandchildren, or you know the kids in the system, and if you ask them the question, how are things changing? And how are we keeping up with them? And then you want to know, well, what does it look like in a classroom? Because eventually, all the work we're going to do is going to have to impact what the children are going to be doing every day with their teachers in collaboration with the central office and your community and all the parents. It gets into what we believe. This statement came from Ron Edman back in the early 80s. People really wondered if schools could make a difference, particularly for children of poverty. He did some research where he found five schools in inner city Detroit, 90% diverse, 90% core, and their test scores were equal to a school system called Gross Point, in which 99% of the kids went on copy. No one predicted they could do well, but they did. And what he found, because of leadership, that we know enough to make a difference. And the question is, how do we feel that we haven't so far? There's not many school systems that I would work with that don't have achievement gap issues. You have them here, we have them in Alabama. Now the question in this process, do we have the will, and that's you as a board, you as a superintendent, using this purposeful way and also to repurpose some of the good things you're doing to implement actions and promote the success and wellbeing for each child? It's not about the 10% that have the gold cords and go across the graduation and they've earned that respect. It's also about the other 90%. And how do you find to the point where you challenge them to make something of themselves, you engage your parents and your community, you're working for workplace readiness skills, not just getting into work? And you're talking about, how do you discover the wealth in each and every child? It's not just about how smart that kid is on the SOL test, it's about how is that child smart? Whether it be in vocational work, being in the arts, athletics, academics, drama? And how do we organize that we're looking at different metrics to celebrate the students with their parents and helping them to find out how they can be the best they can be? We start with this belief, and I don't think there's anyone that's going to disagree, that you want to be good for all kids. That's a challenge and frankly, it's not getting any easier. So we have to continue to be better and purposeful. But we're going to need to do it in partnership with the home, the school and the community. So when we talk about building a strategic plan, we believe that we have to engage that partnership and figuring out how this is at the superintendent and the school board, but we're taking advantage of the whole issue of a triangle of support and preparing students for success. Now, I'm trying to explain the whys. I think we have an agreement. Do you all agree with the whys you want to share with us? Comfortable with that? Now I want to share with you the what. How are we going to do this? Am I over here on the orange side? I guess orange works here. We're talking about readiness, we're talking about preparing to engage in this process. I'd like, normally we start this in October, November, we're going to do it December and January more, but we still can get it done. And we want to avoid messing up, interfering with holidays, we're going to get in most of this work after the holidays. We're trying to communicate, we're trying to build participation, we're trying as we go through this process, eventually this should be on the website, it should be livestreamed. It's the beginning of a transparent process that we can talk about how this works. The design phase is when we actually develop the plan and we go through a group of people, we go through action teams, we develop the plan, we bring it back to the board, hopefully asking them to support it, take draft off it, and then we implement it the following year, and that's the gray area. Let's look at it more specifically. We're trying to develop the why, we're trying to generate our capacity to imagine beyond where we currently are to the aspirations of what we want to become. We want to develop trust, we want to get into communication, we want to prepare a representative team to do the work that represents this community. So the steering committee is going to do the work. In January, we're going to have a community summit, inviting anyone in the community to come out, hear what we're going to try to do, ask for their input, put some of that information on the website, and that's going to be the kickoff official. And we can't have the kickoff until I'm sure that superintendent and the board will all understand what we're getting into and understand that this is the type of area where everybody has to understand the rules that they have. And we want to engage stakeholders as they become ambassadors. So we're trying to set the stage here tonight. One of the things you need to know, when you develop a strategic planning team, over 50% will be members of your community. 50% will be staff, there'll be secondary staff, elementary staff, some central office, there will be four students, usually from the high school, not all seniors and not everyone on the nationalized staff. Four kids that represent a positive to your community. We want to bring in parents, business leaders, civic leaders, and we want two board members, which you need to decide. We're looking, what I call, for two firsts and threevers. We want people that wear more than one hat and have different spheres of influence. If we have someone that's a chamber of commerce, they have children in the school, all of a sudden they become a true friend, but they're also a business person. And then we want to talk about faith-based community, we want to talk about people that have been part of your VTOs, we want to figure out how we do the parents. We also want to have representation of the community that reflects the diversity of your community. If you have a larger Hispanic population, we want to have representation, whatever your demographics would suggest, and it's up to the superintendent, working in partnership with the school board, to figure out who this would be, because we're going to be asking them to give up, let's say, three days and then a day later, and then coming back the following year. So it's going to be a commitment. And so the strategic planning team and how that all works, we're going to be working on and having that together before the middle of the chamber. Right now, it's a limited early. And one of the things you need to understand, Judy's going to be working as the internal coordinator and we have a booklet that talks about step by step through the process. She has a thumb drive, and we have examples of the booklets we do. And so all of this, the what piece, is organized in a way that's going to maximize both efficiency but also work towards developing a product that we're going to be proud of. So in fairness, we then are heading towards, after we have the community summit, actually having a group come together, we're period of three days, and work on the design plan of the strategic plan. And I'm talking a bit about its components. We're going to have action planning groups, which are probably going to be 50 to 75 people. And we're going to have a second strategic planning session. That's the design phase. And in the design phase, the steering committee, which is your strategic planning team, are going to work several days, talk about strengths, challenges and aspirations. The one thing you need to understand, we do not vote majority rules on anything. Anything that becomes part of your plan has to have 100% agreement. And that's sometimes pretty tough because people are going to have differences of opinion and we're going to find common ground. And if one or two people do not buy in, then we'll keep working and change the language until that happens. So that when you get a strategic plan draft several months from now, there will not be one person who is on that team saying, "I didn't support that." It takes longer, but it also builds the type of ownership that you want to have. So we develop the draft plan, it comes back to the board, probably be in fact. Part of the plan, we're going to develop some beliefs, we're going to develop parameters or boundaries, we're going to develop permission state, we're going to have objectives, it's going to start out for each child's will, we're going to have strategies, create a roadmap and a group that we'll be doing. The action plans in yellow is going to The action plans in yellow is an entirely different group than the people that did the strategic plan. There will be an action plan team for each strategy. Usually five, seven. That group can have any number of people. You could have ten, you could have twenty, you could have far more. In this size of the system. You're going to have some people that are going to maybe be involved in both. Strategic planning team and the action team. We want to have the same community involved in the action teams. When we do the, then when we do the plan, you need to understand. That we cannot develop the plan that's about your district. Without talking about your strengths, your challenges. And internal and external factors affecting public schools. You can't develop a plan without the context of the uniqueness of your community. So when the strategic plan team gets together. There are going to be some conversations. And we want to make sure there's no elephants in the room. And we want to build upon the good things you're doing. Because the whole idea, this isn't a duo. You're going to have something different. Because this whole district. That develops the strategic plan no longer will be the same school district. And that's the way it should be. Because if you want to move forward. We don't want to just tinker. We don't want to just talk about fresh cut things. And Wayne, my job. Is to really work and try to bring that group together. To make sure we do some stretching. And maybe. Not maybe. Going outside of comfort zones. Also for use of them. Because if you're going to get better. You're going to have to challenge things. And when you go against that status quo. That's where it comes in courage. Now, I don't know the details of what it might be. That's going to be representative of the people you trust. So, to develop, none of the action team is going to occur over time. That whole work is going to take at least two months. Probably February, March. And we want to then bring it back to the board for your approval. But we don't expect you to rubber stamp. We want you to understand. And if you think it's representative. We're going to ask you to take a vote and it becomes policy. When it becomes policy. It becomes adopted. And only a majority of the board can change it. And this is important in times when sometimes we are going through issues in different board elections. Or our entire board, my turn. But if all the people that did the plan, we want to honor the commitment to their work. And if anyone can find something better, then whether it show where it improves your plan, the majority of them will do it. But then the question is going to be, how is this going to be better for the children and the children? This is an example of one school system that went through this process. First, the picture that's in there represents what that school system looked like. And you're going to see that there's a lot of people that definitely aren't part of necessarily the staff. You're going to see that there's students there. Unfortunately, this group couldn't decide in twenty-five. It's a little bit larger. It's a little harder. But let me tell you about this system. This system was in Fort Spence. This superintendent comes in. It's a poor system, fifteen thousand, pretty diverse. Every bond had failed for over the last ten years with less than forty percent passage. When they did the engagement through strategic planning. And they reached out and involved people and got them into schools. The bond passed at sixty-seven percent for over six hundred million dollars. And they had schools that didn't have air conditioning. Now I have air conditioning. Can you imagine the system where half had air conditioning, half didn't? And this was in Arkansas. That's warm. And you also talk about the needs that they had. They were able to engage people. They were able to have people involved. Think of it about the hours that these people put in over time. Strategic planning is an investment. It's not an investment in Cambridge. It's an investment in engaging members of your community. And we're asking them at times, even staff. Their day jobs don't be any easier. So we have them. Want them there to be engaged and understand the importance of this work. Another example is another group in Texas. Again, smaller school system. But in the end, when we talk about creating engagement. That's why we take pictures, we count people. We show that we are walking the law in our behavior when we talk about collaboration. So this is in the document. That's driven by central office. When we get into implementation. That's the next school year. What the board and the superintendent will need to do in July. Is look at the plan and prioritize what's most important to start the next school year. I don't know what that's going to be. But that's where this plan now becomes the umbrella. For your budget, for your technology plan, for your capital improvement program. Or anything that you have in the system. Now, it doesn't mean you change these things. But you want to align them to make sure that they're all working. So, when you're getting into the implementation. You're getting to the point where you're taking advantage. Of the community support. You're taking advantage of the transition of you and the board. To go to the next level that you want. And what you're doing is you're believing in this. The people of goodwill, working for common good, will make good choices. The people you choose. While they might have personal agendas. In the end, the common agenda has to be all good stuff. And it's for all kids. And another way of looking at, I've been long time ago at John Doody. The representatives of the strategic planning team. And you as a school board. I would hope. You want the best and wisest parents what they want for their child. That much was the community want for each of the children. Because it's not all the parents that come to school with you. And we are responsible for each and every one. So when you build upon this. There's a tremendous amount of potential. That if we follow this process. I think we're going to be able to build the trust. In what you're going to be doing here with the partnership, working with Cambridge. Working with members of your community. And it's a pretty dynamic process. And I have to tell you, it gets exciting. And I hope I can have you join me with that as we go through this. At this point. I would like to stop with my comments and try to address any questions in my head.
Anyone have any comments or any questions they want to ask?
I guess we probably eventually know, but the groups that would be selected. How will we go about, how will that selection process happen?
That'll be up to superintendent. But the superintendent should be working with it in concert with the board. The board might even have some suggestions of who you think would be good people to be on it. It gets to a point that there's probably going to be more people that want to be on it than we can have. And the reason is, when we do all of our work, we divide the twenty-five people into five groups. And when we do five groups. And we go through each group, if all of a sudden I had forty people, it just becomes overwhelming. You can't do it within three days. So there's going to be some compromises. We're going to be looking for the two firsts and three firsts. But we also believe, as an example, a new superintendent coming in through the community. He doesn't have the expertise and the knowledge for the community as you do. So you need to help him in that. And two school board members. You work it out among yourselves who they might be. All the information eventually comes back to the entire board. And we'll report on the process as we go through.
And I think, you had mentioned that these groups are going to be livestreamed? Or?
We would like to do the community summit livestream. The three-day work will not be livestreamed.
I certainly wanted to see what the community wants us to do. I'm assuming there's some assumptions here that we're still teaching reading, writing, and arithmetic.
I haven't seen a strategic plan if someone in the community didn't talk about, are we doing the basics? No, it's, that certainly has to be part of it. And the other thing, sir. When you're developing your strategic plan, you're going to be looking at some of the evidence of your success. You're going to see how you are performing. You're going to need to see, do you have achievement gaps? And a lot of things that's happening in school systems, some of the systems have had a dip. So somewhere in the plan, there has to be, the central focus of the plan gets into instruction. So you cannot avoid that. But the other thing it's going to come into, are issues that we're seeing more of. Is addressing student and actually staff wellness. So these wellness issues on supporting people are becoming more prevalent in some of our systems. And we're not just talking about students that might be more marginalized. We're talking about all students. And staff too is important. The other issue that comes in to play is a repurpose of talking about technology. Not always about just having the means to internet access. But policies for technology where all of a sudden, bad behavior is addressed. And attention span and things. These will all come up.
Yeah, that's what I'm most concerned about. I hear from the business community, I don't know whether it's professional or just the students right out of school. Basically, the businessmen are telling me. It's not, it's not the subject matter that they're concerned about. They just want an employee that will come to work, be on time. And they said they can teach them the job. But if they're not prepared to come to work and be on time. It makes it impossible for the employee.
Well, one thing that I'm sure you're aware of. But the Virginia portrait of a graduate. Talks about soft skills as much as it talks about mathematics and the language art. And we aren't as good as that. So when you notice one of the slides in the belief system. Talking about career and workplace readiness. I can assure you, it will come into conversation. Because we need to have some of those business leaders that you're hearing from, having their voice. And I hope that might be someone who might make sure you recommend to have on the strategic planning. Thank you.
I might have missed it, but who authored the article from the NSPI?
I did.
You did, okay.
Well, in partnership with Frank Morgan. Who also is part of Cambridge. And again, I'm, we're getting a lot of input from it. But really, what it describes in a more abbreviated way is just what I've been talking to you about, the process. It also describes the partnership to develop the community stakeholders.
And so, how are these groups led? Are they facilitated by the both of you or?
Yes, we will lead the group. I want to say though. It's not our job to create content. Our job is to facilitate the process. So, we, we're neutral in regard to this. We need to trust the people in the system. So, we aren't here to talk about, you know, what we might know here or might there. We will share examples. But this has to be totally driven by your view.
I appreciate your presentation and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the information.
You know, I'm really looking forward to it. You know, your neighbors. Your neighbors, I mean, we've been together with your school district and your people for years. And it's just nice to work close to home. So we're looking forward to it. Anything else?
Kevin, thank you very much to the school board. Thank you guys. And I think what I hope you saw tonight, the, it was a very targeted reason why we approached Kevin and his group. Because the things that he values are the things that we've been talking about as far as the engagement. Workplace readiness, instruction, decisions about budgeting and expenditures and et cetera. And so. It's an incredibly thoughtful process. And it's more work. And it's going to be harder work. And talking about things like, we don't do majority vote, we do have agreement. That takes more time and effort to massage and work through. But ultimately, in the end, you do the work upfront, you have a much better product. And which is why. The ultimate goal is to have, and like I said, it's not a document. It's, it's a, it's really a template and an umbrella for how we make decisions moving forward. And to maximize our return on investment. And so, I, the, your whole part with engaging the community. And having it be meaningful. And having at least fifty percent of the folks involved in this being community members. And we know that is so important and our community is itching for it. Is what really, you know, struck a chord with me. So I just really appreciate that and appreciate the board, all the members for their support as well.
Thank you. Hope you all have a happy holiday.
You too.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, appreciate you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Hunter to come forward to bring forward some supplemental appropriations.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm here to ask for supplemental appropriations for three different brands. Title four brand, security equipment brand, and E-Race expansion brand. I did provide a brief explanation of each. And does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Hearing that, can I entertain a motion to void and accept this? I'd like to accept the supplemental appropriations for this year 2023 as presented. Thank you. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'd like to invite Judy Anderson to come forward to present. The Title I Advisory Committee Membership Proposal.
Good evening. This is the post-membership for Title I Parent Advisory. The advisory will serve a critical role of providing input on how funds are used to best meet needs of students that are at Title I schools. But also ways to best engage families. So we plan to meet three times this year. The first meeting in December. And of course, it's listed as tentative because the members of the advisory may lose just all candidates. Thank you for consideration.
All right. And I think this is, can I just? Okay, I see no problem with it. Do you guys, can we entertain a motion and we're headed?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion to approve the 2002, 2022, 23 Title I Parent Advisory Committee Membership as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. No she cares.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'd like Susan Abel to come forward, and she's gonna present her proposed members of the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Good evening. Yes, this evening, these are the individuals that have been recommended by school principals or have reached out, um, indicating that they would like to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee for this year. The advisory committee does meet four times a year, and they have entered on our federal program as well as programs and services for our students with disabilities here in Washington.
And I see a reason to hold this to the next meeting, if we can entertain a motion to accept this?
I recognize the syllabus angle there, it's, uh, gives me pleasure, uh, to approve or, uh, present a motion to accept the advisory committee as presented.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. No question cares. You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I believe we have Mr. Arnold, correcto? To come forward to discuss a recommendation for a contractor to be awarded for HVAC upgrades to get us off of the, uh, two-pike system at Orange Elementary, correcto?
Yes, exactly right. Very good summary. Back on seat number thirtieth, RFP was issued for a design build project for a contractor to replace the fan coil units in all of the different spaces at Orange Elementary School and main building with water source heat pumps, which will enable year-round operation of both the heating and cooling functions when they're needed, and will make the fall and spring switching, at which time, in the fall, after the switch over, you can't cool, and in the spring after the switch over, you can't heat. So this will eliminate that major issue and also eliminate a lot of related problems with condensation and so forth. We received one bid, part of the two P M. deadline on Friday, October fourteenth, and that bid of one million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred twenty dollars from E-Tech Mechanical Corporation is within the available funding provided by the HVAC grant plus the matching S R. three funds that have been set aside for that, plus about ten percent from existing capital and/or redirected S R. funds, in other words, we can pay for the project when we work at a time. Therefore, the administration recommends this project for approval. E-Tech Mechanical Corporation is based in Edrifle, Virginia, and has provided several references for proper projects at school divisions in Richmond and in spots of the county. If approved, the work is scheduled to be performed during the twenty twenty-three summer break, and also include cabinet modifications and counter-timer placements, which are needed anyway, but will also be changed to accommodate the requirement. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just to comment, somebody I know was talking about the change over this year with the, the warm weather, and so, uh, they were excited to see that this was on the agenda for tonight. It's been a good year at that sort of thing.
Well, there are no objections, um, and there are questions of Mr. Arnold. Do you wanna entertain a motion?
Absolutely, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we accept a work contract for the HVAC upgrades.
Okay, uh, second please. Ten second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. No question cares.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and then, uh, Mr. Honig will stay put and provide an update on some ongoing facility projects.
Thank you, Dr. Honig, members of the board. First project is, of course, the Gordon Harbor Edition, which is progressing nicely. Um, since we last met, they have completed the footing excavation and concrete divisi for the footings and foundation walls, uh, structural steel and decking for the project. Um, and the, uh, underslade plumbing is getting underway with electrical. And actually, uh, Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the concrete slabs for the upper deck where the canopy will go is poured, so we have that, uh, floor ready, and then also provide partial weather protection for the ongoing part of the project. Um, and then, of course, the next next step would be to, uh, onto Orange County High School. Um, we've had, uh, some roofing problems with the, uh, roofing cottages, and the intent there is to get at least three to five more years onto those, uh, buildings, and to do so, we replaced all of the seams on the roofs, but we did not replace the entire roof, which was unnecessary if we wanted to make those a permanent facility. So, there you go. Uh, also, at Orange County High School as well as here, may have seen the big tree that came down back in, uh, in, uh, July, that we, uh, got cut up and pulled away, and we also had a very large concrete come down at the north wall of the high school and crushed the canopy and the rustle, that's all been repaired. Uh, there was some lighting damage, lighting damage to the, uh, track, which has also been repaired, maybe the same contractor in fact fixed that in the original work. Uh, there was a damaged fence over there as well, and, uh, all of that also has been repaired. At Lucasville Middle School, the lighting project there is complete, replaced all of the lighting controls and sensors, and the, uh, flash service at Orange Elementary with two by four flat panel LED, uh, nominating the existing ceiling. The work was done after hours with minimal disruptions to school activities, and therefore we didn't have to wait till next summer.
Is that worse than APM?
Did APM do that?
No, that was, uh, the contractor who approved, uh, and they, uh, it's a separate contract from APM, however, APM is looking at the rest of the building, did not involve the flashers, if possible, LED, converting there. So we hear that about that a little while. Uh, the security vest deals, we received a very partial grant for the security vest deals, so we're only able to do and add at, um, it's Locust Grove Primary and Prospect Heights. Uh, we're not sure why they picked those two schools and rejected the high school and Locust Grove Elementary, which is the identical building to Prospect Heights, so I'm not sure if they want, but we will fit those two schools in. Also, at Prospect Heights, uh, we have windows on order to the cafeteria, and, uh, as, I mean, we know the tall case windows at these two buildings, even though they're only twenty years old, we've had several issues with those windows. Basically, they swing out in the front, which is where they're very hard to close. And we picked the worst ones, which is the cafeteria, we'll get those out, it's kind of a pilot program for replacing the other. Last but not least, and the second last, uh, pillars, uh, are on order for Locust Grove Elementary and Prospect Heights. Uh, they're currently expected to be delivered for Locust Grove Elementary in April and for Prospect Heights in August. Locust Grove Elementary School, we replaced, uh, ceiling lines in about half the school, replaced them with shades, like we did next door, Locust Grove Primary last year, and we'll do the other half in, uh, this summer either, if you're a little odd. So, I got any questions or comments from the board?
Keep that going. My update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Arnold, and then, if you guys are good to keep going, this is another somewhat lengthy one, coming forward, and so we will have Dr. Anderson and Dr. Honig come forward, and this is gonna be about first in a two-part series, second part coming in December, this is an overview of our core curriculum K twelve.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share one of our favorite topics, which is the curriculum for the school system. And so that is a very large topic, and a lot of components, but tonight we're going to strive to provide a general overview of the curriculum, and there's also a link to supporting documents. Um, so throughout the presentation, you'll see snapshots of those documents as we explain each of those. Um, so tonight, um, we're gonna talk about core curriculum, um, which has been mentioned in that one, including English, mathematics, science, and history and social studies. So we're gonna look at four components of curriculum. The Virginia Standards of Learning, and we have to look back and learn, I'm gonna start there, are the basis for the curriculum in all core content areas. Then the B D L E curriculum framework expands on standards, and teachers use these standards to understand the depth and the level of thinking required for students in order to successfully master each of the standards, and the teachers also use the curriculum framework when developing their pacing guidelines for each course. Next, the assessments, both standardized teacher development, the line to the depth and level of thinking that was outlined in the curriculum framework. And finally, the classroom instruction is the delivery of that curriculum. The graphic in the center that you see will be discussed later, because it represents the multifaceted approach to the desired delivery of curriculum in time. As we go through the presentation, note that all the areas, the curriculum, the instruction, and the assessment must all be in alignment in order for students to do the most assessment. So we think about curriculum that's developed at a very, um, large degree at the State Department of Education, um, and so we have those documents that cover the standard of learning and curriculum framework, but also some example activities and also assessments. And then we go through a process of working that down to the classroom level, um, where teachers have some flexibility to meet the needs of our students. Um, so every summer, our teachers work on, um, curriculum, so we have representatives from the schools who come in each grade level, and they work on each of those core areas. So we take what we receive from the Department of Education, and we make it our own as a division. So those are then developed into units that our teachers design, um, we're gonna show some pacing guides from that later. Um, at the school level, after that's been developed, um, the teams at the school have a lot of discretion in terms of the lessons that they plan together, um, we've heard Dr. Dr. Hornet talk about professional learning communities, um, and emphasis on that. So this seems that teachers can really gather around the standards and the guides that we created to determine how to best deliver that to their students. Um, beyond that, each classroom, um, teachers have specific needs within their classrooms, while then, to then, um, fine tune, um, what they've come up together with as the grade level, and work on that at the teacher level, working all the way down to the individual needs of students in the classroom. And so we're gonna share some of those resources and documents that guide that work, um, including what's provided at, um, state level, um, some examples of what's been, um, developed by our teachers in the summer, um, across the division, and then we'll share, um, some of the ideas that we have for assessment as well, as those that are required by students. So, yes, we're gonna start with our pre-K program, because that's a little bit different than our K twelve. Um, so for our pre-K program, um, the Department of Education has established, um, a set of standards for students that are very holistic in terms of the whole child, because we are talking about our earliest learners. So addressing everything from how children learn through play at those really early ages, to those areas, um, that are academic, so they have, um, guidelines around literacy, reading and writing, mathematics, science, and social studies for our youngest learners. Um, so those are outlined right here. So you'll see, this is the beginning of what you heard earlier in the presentation around the curriculum that was originally drafted, around, um, those biases that we talked about before, which require students to have experiences with communication, collaborating with others, creativity, being good citizens, um, and critical thinking. So, um, you can see those are reflected for our youngest learners. And of course, the health and the physical component is also extremely important, and we have staff members who are involved in those processes as well. Um, in pre-K, we use a very, um, pre-K friendly curriculum called Frog Street, um, and then within that, there's this open sequence, um, for all those areas that we talked about, pacing for the teachers, um, lessons that they deliver, and assessments, and stuff. However, there is flexibility for our teams and teachers to make adjustments based on the needs of our students. Um, they may, in particular, have a group of students who are coming in with deficits in some of these areas that they may be disturbed in. So there is room for flexibility, of course, and also to monitor as the students progress through the year. Um, so those teams also need, um, during the summer and throughout the school year, um, to make adjustments to the lesson plans made for their teaching, and those adjustments may be anything from the order that units are taught, down to the lessons that are administered, um, and how we're setting these students. So we're gonna start now with, um, K through twelve, the English S Ls. Um, each, um, English S L has strands, um, that you will see, um, woven throughout K through twelve. They are communication and multiple literacies, reading, writing, and then research. This is an example of a curriculum framework that we talked about, which is that taking that standard and expanding it out to be very specific for teachers, um, when they are trying to design their lessons and assessments. So you'll see the standard is written at the top, the eleven point three, that's the basic standard. Under it is, um, an expanded, all the different parts that go along with that. You will see in all of these curriculum frameworks that we're gonna show you, essential understanding, these are things that the students should be able to do, and the essential knowledge, skills, and processes are also things that the students are expected to be able to do if they successfully master this standard. So this is an example of a high school English curriculum framework, okay? And here you see an example of the kindergarten standard, it's outlined in the same way, tracks consistent K twelve. Um, so again, the teacher has the standard available, these teachers work on this in the summer as well, in the autumn evenings, um, what the students need to know, and then it gets very specific in terms of exactly how the students can be straight from day to morning, what they are required to do. So the teachers can use this, um, as a basis for the types of activities and the learning targets they can establish for their students. Um, this progression by grade is for the reading standard, and it's only one portion of it, and this is provided by the Virginia Department of Education. This is really critical in our work with the curriculum and in daily work with, um, with teachers as well, um, because this outlines for teachers, when particular skills or concepts are introduced in that K twelve progression, and then when they will know that the students have been exposed to that. Um, so if there are some deficits, they can actually look back to when is that introduced to students, how is that standard crafted, and be able to fill in some of those gaps. And they also know what to expect, it also allows them to know what they're preparing their students for, for the subsequent school year. Next, we have the K twelve math S Ls strands, they're listed on the right, all throughout K through W, you'll see number, numbers sense, computation and estimation, measurement and geometry, probability and statistics, and patterns, functions, and algebra. But they also have process goals over here, which are also, um, processes that students are expected to be able to do when they're working within math. So we'll see those as you go on. And the next slide, we, this is an example of a grade eight math curriculum framework. The, um, S Ls, of course, at the top, and it's broken out for the teachers where they can really understand what it is that the standard is asking the students to do. You'll notice what we do with teachers when we're doing curriculum planning, is looking at those verbs and nouns that are in there to make sure that's what we were talking about earlier with alignment. It's really important that teachers understand if it's something that's just to be identified, or if it's really to be like, um, at a higher level of cognitive thinking. So they have to look at all of those things, and then over here again, you have those skills. So, um, whatever the teacher writes out as their lesson, their assessment also needs to assess at that same level. Next, you'll see, this is an example of Algebra One, same thing, same parts to this. And Algebra One, of course, as you know, we teach that at both the middle and the high, so we also have to make sure that that matches, because those students are getting a high school credit, so it needs to match the same types of expectations that students on the high school level have. So this again is the standard, helping the teacher to understand the standard as well as learning the essential knowledge and skills that students should have to be successful. Next. This is an example of work rate math standard, um, in the strand probability and statistics. Um, you can see that here, we tell you in terms of what the students need to understand, and again, um, the skills that they need to be able to demonstrate. And again, the skills that they need to be able to demonstrate, and this remains that those are used to design the tasks as well as the assessment. So these are the basis for math instruction. This document is very helpful, and then this one is also provided by the Department of Education. It's also very useful within the school, and the principals are leading their PLCs in terms of looking at data and the instructions. So this is just a snapshot. This includes those strands, measuring it, the geometry, probability and statistics, patterns, functions, and algebra. There's also a chart of this for numbers sense and the computation and estimation. So again, it shows, for example, the people and concept, shows when that concept first shows up in the standards and then how it is built upon throughout the subsequent years. So for example, this one on data representation interpretation is first introduced in kindergarten. And then you can see that that carries all the way through with math instruction. This is an example of the K-12 Science SLO strands. You'll see they have both the content strands and literacy components. And if you look at the top, you'll see that is the scientific and engineering design process. That is embedded throughout all of the standards of learning for science, K through 12, where students should be able to get on and brainstorm, research, test, retest, improve, test that engineering design process, and then communicate results and findings. So that, I put that there so you can see that that is also built throughout all of the standards in science. So the next slide shows you an example of biology. This is again, same parts that you've seen before. They talk more about central idea, and then they even put the vertical one in the end, the standard for the sciences. You'll see enduring understanding and essential knowledge and practices. So this is an example of high school science.
And if you guys take a look, you have that Laura, if you look at the last bullet under essential knowledge and practice, you see this more in the humanities and in science when you get verbs like describe and explain, like describe the structure of enzymes and explain their role in acting as catalysts. And this is, this is where the alignment piece comes in. And this is where Judy and Renee and our, and our curriculum instruction folks working with the teachers to make sure that when we are teaching and assessing students, are we really making them describe and explain? Because that is how they are going to be tested on the end of course exam. And so if we haven't, if they have been taught to identify it, but not actually describe it or explain it, we're out of alignment, and we're not setting them up for success. Or the constant really honing in on the verbs and what the student is being asked to do from the standards is really important as we're building our lessons and our unit plans to make sure these guys will get into it also impacts the pacing. How much time, because all of these standards truly aren't created equal. Some of them are very knowledge and fact-based, some of them are really higher level skills. And we're, you know, so you're always trying to also figure out how much time you're going to allot to address each standard as well.
And what, Laura, it comes down to, what is the definition of the word describe?
Right.
If thirty students have a different interpretation of what describe means, they're not... They may have the knowledge, but they can't put it down on paper because they don't understand what the word means. And to be honest, I'm not sure that describe science and describe math may be totally two different things. So to me, when it gets down to testing, one of the things that was a little picky with me is how do you define the word? So I think we need to concentrate on that so that the student understands what when they use a specific word, what they're actually asking.
Couldn't agree more. That, that's exactly the work that they're, that is constantly being evaluated and reassessed and based on how we do and we look at our, we use our formative assessments that we have that focus on this to see how the students are progressing to make sure they actually are addressing those essential understandings. So a hundred percent.
And this is just another example of the science standard. Again, from elementary, you can see it's designed the same way as the previous one in K-12. You'll notice in the far right, those last two bullets really center around students being involved in doing science, conducting scientific investigations, doing things that are hands-on.
And then, of course, when we look at the impact of COVID, and we, when we weren't in school, and it was really, I mean, when you look at a subject like science, it's really hard to deliver some of those hands-on lab experience. So this is where, when students were coming back, some of these things that they would have gotten in that third grade example, it was delivered in a way that they didn't, it wasn't necessarily experiential. They might have heard it, but didn't actually experience it. So now that's the gap that we have to go back, and the standards keep moving. But we also have, we also have gaps in the understanding based on the fact that we didn't have it in front of us to conduct these actual experiments and to do this hands-on work. So you're trying to, you're trying to rob Peter to pay Paul to get time to go back and, and fix what was missed. But also, fourth grade is happening as we speak. And the fourth grade standards haven't changed because we didn't get all the way through third grade. So that's a little bit of the problem that all schools are facing.
So, and the last is the history and social sciences. And they have the same strands, essential skills, essential understandings, essential knowledge, and possible learning experiences. So we can do that. This is an example of World History I at the high school level. Our, a lot of these have skills, historical thinking, analysis, geographical analysis, economic design, maybe. A lot of the standards for history a few years of this, this last revision before the one that we're currently going, really get focused around skills. For example, these types of things about historical thinking and probably any points of geographical analysis, and not just memorizing states, but analyzing things by looking at maps and looking at data and things like that will really emphasize quite a bit. Next, we see Virginia Studies. This is an example of a Virginia Studies standard, and this is taught in Core Grade currently in our division. But you can see again, it's very nicely laid out in terms of what the students need to be able to understand and do, but also some suggested experiences that may be helpful to them in their learning, and even an example of a model that the teacher could use in class. So there are a lot of resources that are provided for us at the state level. In addition to these, there are also a lot of activities that the teachers can use and assessments as well, quick checks and things like that that can help us in our field work. So that's the big picture of what we're provided by our State Department of Education. And now we're going to move into how this really comes to life for our teachers. So we're going to share some pacing guides now. These were created by our own teachers with the help of the department's specialists here who are coordinators in those core areas. And this will show how some of that's packed together and it's shared with other teachers across the division for consistency in terms of the delivery of instruction. So this is an example from a third grade unit that's on the water cycle and earth resources. So you'll see on here, when our teachers develop, it's a lot of work in the summer and it uses each grade level, and they develop ways that our teachers can put this together and teach this in terms of units. So this, these are the two standards that are being addressed at the top. And then there's a suggested amount of pacing, and we do that because the teachers are using their own expertise to develop that based on the experiences that they've had before. If they've had input that something that's been taken longer, that may be adjusted during the time that they're working on this, or if it can be condensed. Or some of it can depend on what Dr. Corin just mentioned in terms of some of the standards are later than others, or there's just more to that in terms of maybe the content, but maybe also the level of cognitive demand there. So they make those decisions based on their experiences and their expertise. The key vocabulary is identified for the teachers because that is critical to students' understanding and that they have to have a good handle on that vocabulary. And then you can see that they move there through the content that's laid out and the standards to the skills, and then highlight the scientific and engineering practices that actually do in science, for example, in science. The resources are listed there with links for the teachers. So hopefully, that saves a lot of time in terms of teachers accessing what they'll need to teach those standards. Those resources are those that are vetted through the VDOE approved list of resources as well as our own selection committees here that are comprised of our teachers and administrators. And just as a reminder, those are then put out in the public comment with opportunity for parents also comment before this is adopted. And so all of those are outlined for them, as well as some key assessments. There are assessments that are devised at the division level, but there's also flexibility for teachers to develop their assessments, in particular, those in their PLCs, how they're monitoring awareness throughout the course of the unit. So this formative assessment that Dr. Corin mentioned. The next example, this is a high school English eleven pacing guide. Has maybe the same parts. You can see that these, the SLO strands that they're going to be covering here, it will take three weeks, the content that they're covering, as well as the skills that the student will need to be able to, be able to do. And some examples of activities. These aren't exhaustive of all activities that are done, but they, these are very helpful. Like, for example, when we get a new teacher to the division to be able to have this pacing guide upfront. So they can, they go through it before they even start the year, start, come here. And it really helps them to see what activities have been used and have been approved by our teachers who are already teaching it. And we'll see under the resources, those are links. So they can link right to some activities that they already use over the resources or the readings, so that they're there for them. So that's just an example of how you take the...
Yes, perfect.
The, the resources, and you said that the parents get, have access to that and be able to say whether they'd like it or not. How often does that go out? Is that every year at the beginning of the school year, or how does that work? First, the ones that I mentioned earlier, that was at the time of adoption. Those are out for review. However, parents are always welcome to review any of the curriculum materials. Same thing here, these are the readings that were approved when we adopted the textbook, and most of these come straight from the textbook. And we also have lists at each, with English especially, starting in middle school, and I think we have two that started from six through twelve. We have the list of things that people teach within that course. And so parents can always request to see that, but we also have a syllabus where it is listed on there, but it is the book in reading. And at any time, if a parent, you know, might, there might be something on there that they wouldn't want their child to read, they can request an alternate reading assignment, and our teachers have those there. So it's usually about every six years when we adopt like a new textbook or a new series or a new resource. And so the pacing guides are available for each of the content areas for all three of us. Now we're going to transition into just briefly a bit about assessment for learning and uplearning. So we know that assessment is very important, not only to determine what students have learned and for accountability measures, but also as we were about to begin the instruction, the primary goal of assessment is to determine how do we need to adjust that instruction on a daily basis based on the assessments that teachers are constantly doing each day in class as they're instructing. And this is just an example of some of those assessments. We've talked about the SLO test before. Along with that, we're also, we have access to SLO test documents, which again will reflect which of those standards may be concentrated more heavily on the SLO tests. Performance-based assessments, which really brings together those skills that we were talking about earlier, that we even mentioned about what being important in the workforce. So the skills that are just off their skills where students can integrate information, and they can also then patch that in a way that may differ from a multivitamin test. So they're able to respond to a more authentic task in order to perform on those. We have division level assessments that are being assessed that are consistent across the division. And then, of course, teachers can develop their own assessments in their teams. And then we also have some other assessments that are used to measure student growth as well. And this is a high school, right, we've been kindergarten with Virginia kindergarten's assessment, and that's the one that we have here. Change to thousand, just to see. Now we're going to get into the final piece, which is in planning our instructional lessons. This is the bracket that, a little larger so you can see it better, that was on that earlier slide. And so in planning instructional lessons, classroom teachers have to consider many factors. So here, this bracket represents our instructional framework piece for planning. So if you look in the center, you'll see the words visible learning. So all teachers are asked to develop lessons utilizing visible learning, research-based practices. And basically, what that means is that teachers think about their lessons through the eyes of their students. So they want to make it very clear what the students need to know and then how they will know that they're successful. So they write learning intentions and success criteria for each lesson that they do every day. And it should be visible in the classroom and talked about, and the student, it should be very clear to the student of what they're going to learn today and how they'll know that they're successful. So additionally, the teachers must ensure that the lessons are relevant, rigorous, and engaging. And they must also encompass this outer circle that represents those biases that Judy already mentioned. Teachers try to incorporate those throughout all lessons when appropriate. So there's all, there should be examples of times when in a lesson, students have the opportunity to collaborate with others. Communication should be running through all of them at all times. Citizenship, creative thinking, collaboration, I'm missing one. Creativity, those five things should be embedded throughout everything that we do. Today's presentation was basically meant to provide an overview of our curriculum that our teachers are using. So they work together with our curriculum specialist here at T-Back to develop a pacing guide and design lessons for students that cover all the state standards. So in this presentation that Laura will be sharing with you is this document linked. And Laura, if you'll click on that. It's going to take you into a drive where we have organized this for you. You'll be able to look at all of the content areas, starting with pre-K all the way up to grade 12. So click on, let's just say, look at the math, for example. Once you click in that, you'll see we've broken it out by elementary, middle, and high if you're going to like this one of those as a menu. We copied the curriculum frameworks from the D O E for you, so you don't have to go to the Department of Ed and then back and forth. And then scroll up a little bit. You'll see here pacing for seven, eight, that's our math seven, eight class. Algebra I middle school pacing guide, you'll have that right there that you can look at. And more than. And if you back, back out, Nora, to the curriculum, please. Additionally, those, I also included for you, those are just part of the studies for this school year, just so you can kind of see which science classes we have, which math classes we have, make it a little bit easier all in one place. So that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Go back to one of the very early slides when you talked about math curriculum.
Another slide. Try and make thirteen. And then fourteen.
No, thirteen.
Thirteen, fourteen.
You've got to make it bigger, I can't read that for sure.
Yeah, you're not... There we go.
Looking at the left-hand column, one, two, three, four, five, down there, and does that say reasoning?
Reasoning.
Okay, I, I love to see that there. I sort of call it logical thinking, but I want everybody to understand when you study geometry, it's not the a squared plus b squared equals c squared. That's a fact in a right triangle. That's not reasoning. So if your geometry teacher is just teaching you a squared plus b squared equals c squared, that teacher is not teaching reasoning, and that's not what they're supposed to do. that teacher is not teaching reasoning, and that's not what they're supposed to be doing. Uh, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with knowing that fact, but that geometry course is to teach reasoning and logical thinking using the context of straight lines and triangles and circles. But the main purpose of doing, because a lot of the students will say, this doesn't make any sense because we never see this in the real world. And they're right. It's a world that we've created, human beings have created, to teach logical thinking. That's what geometry is about. And I thank you for having reasoning up there.
And in conclusion, I would just like to add that the curriculum is always a work in progress. Our teachers are always working to make it stronger, more tightly aligned, and of course, to provide more options and more activities, lessons, great experiences for students that are available to their peers to share all the time. So you cannot do this work without the amazing teachers that we have.
And also, when you look at the pacing guides and like, let's say, when we have as a student in class, and you look at a pacing guide and it says, well, it's just going for first, the business that should be here. They are like fluid a little bit because, you know, like you said, the gas that we've had. So if we need a little time or not be ahead of the students. So those pacing guides are just that they're a guide, and they're always named or guys based on the students who are in front of the teachers. Any other questions?
So is it up to the teacher what like online curriculums are used? I know you had mentioned Prague Street for pre-K. I've heard Second Step being thrown around. So is that up to the individual teachers? Or do we have any set programs that OCPS strictly uses?
We do have set programs that need to adopt. For example, Discovery Ed for science, that's one, that's one that's adopted and has like online resources, as well as text resources and hands-on kits. Teachers do have some discretion, of course, they work within their PLC and then put their principles in their buildings if it's something outside of what we've adopted as a district.
And you probably, probably don't know this, but is Discovery Ed and Prague Street the only two encouraging for it now? Or it's just?
Each one of the three, yeah, we have adopted textbooks. And generally, those are online materials as well as hard copies. So we have some things to do with the math, science, and the charts. We use some vision for math. And we have benchmark workshop for the charts at K five.
And then most of the textbook companies now have, like, let's say, you were to adopt a textbook, they come with an online, and they have the two, so that you have those.
And that is very handy for teachers if they're planning for them to be able to access their manuals, which are.
And there are also like supplemental programs that we've adopted, such as Greenberg's math, that's one, is a supplemental math program. The Success Makers one for the middle school, that's something that will enhance communication for math and writing, their writing, that's another program for helping with communication and writing. So they're different programs. Most colleges have this one. Any other questions?
Thank you, ladies. And so he's put a lot of time into that. Thank you.
Yeah, they were all over next of it. And then we will, when we get to the December nineteenth work session, they're, they're quickly gathering to do a, a similar focus on connect our elective courses. And so there are certainly, the process is certainly the same, but it's, instead of SOLs, you have competencies and other, other guiding principles that are established that we have to meet. So there's nuances that are different, but the process is largely the same. And so that's, and I want to thank you guys, too. That's a massive undertaking to try to, to highlight that. So I think you guys did a great job of giving, giving an overview and then providing additional information. So we're happy to answer any more questions in time as well, of course, but thank you.
Please let us know if lunch, you get into the link, if there's something that you can't see. We think we have all the settings correct, you know, how sometimes you miss something. So let us know.
So this, this particular presentation is, this, this will be available on the website as well for anybody else to see. So I guess my question is, if we decide, once we have the second part of this, if we go into January, maybe we propose to have some type of Q and A, whether parents send in question, questions to us, and then we ask you the questions or something like that, whether public comment may be a long process if we did that. But if we had the questions in advance and we could ask that either something along those lines, I think would be helpful.
I'm, I'm just assuming that everything is presented. Some, some things that are presented to us here are already hooked to our agenda. But it's just my personal feeling. If we have something presented here, that it should be like this one, hooked up to this meeting, so that the public can go back and see it.
And it will. Yeah, yes, it just wasn't on, it wasn't on the, the agenda on Thursday. So, yeah, I imagine it, once they go back.
I, well, I'm just repeating myself. But anything, this is a public meeting. Anything's presented on the screen for everybody to see. And, and, you know, by the time, give Laura a day or so to get it all hooked up. But when you go back and look at this meeting, I expect to see, I would expect to see everything there.
Yes, and we have, if you can ask Laura and she's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, manager, members of the board. That brings us to the end of reports and recommendations.
Thank you. And at this time, Ms. Bauer, would you like to review calendars?
Sure. I apologize for the look of these. I was, I got a little creative before Thanksgiving, and now looking at them, I don't like them at all. So I'll re-ramp the format. But in December, we have our regular meeting on the fifth. I believe there is a governor's school, of the Ridge Virtual Governor's School meeting on the seventh. And then we will have our final work session for the year on the nineteenth. And winter break is the twenty-first through the thirtieth.
I just make a comment. I'm going to be out of town the week of the fifth, so I will miss the meeting on the fifth. And I've arranged to take part in the Blue Ridge Governor's School by Zoom type of meeting. I'm, I'm going to chair the meeting and have the vice chair be there and chair the meeting, but I'll take part in the meeting. And with the approval of my board of colleagues, I'll be able to vote on ideas.
And then for January, uh, let's see. We have student holiday, teacher work days on the second and the third. And we will have our first school board meeting and the annual reorganization on the second. Student holiday on the sixteenth and All-Staten holiday on the sixteenth. Prep board meeting on the twentieth. I thought they moved those to Fridays again. And then for anyone who would like to attend the BSBA Capital Conference in Richmond, is that, I believe I have that on the wrong. That should be on the thirtieth, and the work session is on the twenty-third. Yeah, I just need to move that.
The work session's not the last one.
Right, because I, I did that so that people could attend that capital conference and then want to, and not have to rush back because that's in Richmond.
Was it the capital conference on the thirtieth?
Yes.
The capital conference is the third one?
Yes.
Okay, and then on the twenty-third, obviously, the work session.
And then if we go back to that December fifth, June the, I will update this. We will have some recognitions that evening. We also have our first public hearing to get some input from the community on the budget. And that has been advertised as required. And then we have a public comment session on the SR three grant and plan. It's required by that plan. And then we'll have normal public comment. So we have three opportunities there. And then I will update all of these that we've already taken action on.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. All right, now, here we have, um, closed session certification, please.
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting on the following. Discussion of personnel, other performance of the division employees, authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia. Resignation, termination, transfer, employment salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
All right, can I have a second? Give a second. That, we're in closed session. All right.
The board will reconvene at Ipanzachan at which time the following, which will be happening. Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative report of doubt, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas two point two dash thirty-seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from divulgating their apartments by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion that which closed meeting was convened, heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Um, everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll call Ms. Bauer.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mrs. Plinter?
Aye.
And I'm chair of court cert of evidence, followed by the SPES, and then no votes. The resolution approved, is approved by the practice committee.
Thank you. Dr. Fornick, disposition of personnel actions?
Yes, ma'am, we're requesting approval of the personnel actions presented to the school board during closed session.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
Remove the exception agreement and approval of the personnel agenda to include retirement, resignation, employment, and transfers, stop, and coaching and extracurricular appointments.
Thank you. Can I have a second? One second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, that completes all business. And?
I just have a question. There was some talk about maybe getting an architectural firm to look at this beauty. At least I think we should be getting a price on what that's going to be.
Correct, that's, that's what it would be. It would be if, if we wanted to pursue that angle, they would come here and essentially provide a quote for what it would be in order to get that analysis. Correct. Yep.
I, I just wanted to show you, because unless the price is totally unreasonable, I think, I think it's something we, we should do because some members of our community are interested in it. And, uh, it's asking the school board to make decisions without competent knowledge of, about it. I'm just going to need to get the information.
We were, I have to circle back. I can't remember, Ms. Page, I'd like to go back to the notes from when we met them. Can't remember.
Well, I, I think by consensus, we can have the superintendent go ahead and tell them to give us a price.
Well, and get them to come and do a, I guess, a sort of informal, formal presentation of what that would look like and, um, everything. I think, I'm not sure if we talked about a date or, but I think you can reach out to them and we can work something so they can come.
That's fine with me, but I, I just, I just wanted to move on.
Okay.
All right, so then we're on, we'll, we'll schedule that time and we'll make contact with the folks at RRMM.
All right, with that being presented, I will adjourn this meeting.